Hey, 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 beautiful people and welcome back to another soulful session of Mondays with Montanay. This is where we dive deep into the rhythm of life, love and liberty. Democracy is a part of that and I'm your host, E D Montanay. And I'm ready to groove with you for the beats of the week. So grab your soda water, your hog head cheese, your crackers, kick back and let's get into the vital conversation. We know the beat goes on, but it's up to us to keep the rhythm of democracy alive and kicking. And so we gotta do it together. Today, we have a special guest, a good friend, a wonderful, whatever he is, and a city of Portland commissioner. His name is Dan Ryan, and we're so happy to have him, who was once again running for a seat as city commissioner. We want to put him there to a brand new way of governance for Oregon. Dan, welcome to the show.
Thank you so much, E D. It's good to see you.
It's good to see you. Now, you've got all kinds of stuff that's happened since you've become commissioner. You got married. You have twin boys now. No.
Not that I know of, yeah.
Tell me how you're doing. How are things going for you?
Things are great. You know, it's wonderful to have support at home and have that balance. It's really important to keep that balance, as you know, when you're doing, when you're a public servant. But I love, I love, I love people in general, and I actually like serving people I'll never know. And I keep them in my heart as I make decisions and move the work.
When I first got here, we had whoop whoop as the pastor. Do you know who, as the pastor, as the mayor? Do you remember what was his name?
Oh, yeah.
Mayor Clark.
Mayor Clark, Bud Clark.
Bud Clark. And that was the most interesting. We have moved so far in the political arena from Bud Clark's whoop whoop to something a lot more, you know. Today, we're going to be diving into the transition of Portland city government from a commission forum to a mayor council system. This change represents not only a policy shift, but a profound reimagining of our governance. Let's start by understanding the context of this transition. Portland is undergoing a transformation from its longstanding commission form of government to a mayor council system. Now, this shift involves three key changes. The introduction of ranked choice voting, the establishment of geographic districts, and a redefinition of roles within the city's leadership. Dan, can you share with our listeners the origins of this transformation and why it is happening now? Why now?
I think the reason why it happened now is because putting something like this on the ballot a couple of years ago, when many people are just not very happy with how things are running in the city of Portland, I think it was that time and place where people said, yes, yes, to change. And that's, I think, what they were voting for. The origins go way back. We've, every 10 years is a charter commission. Every 10 years, they wrestled with this. And what I noticed is that when 10 years ago, prior to this, they didn't get it on the ballot. And I think a lot of people were concerned that we didn't move from this antiquated form of government to something different. City Club took this on as a project, and they engaged a lot of the community. North Star Foundation got heavily involved. And so that's really where a lot of the blueprint came from this. And then we put in the charter commission in 2021. And they, they moved this along and really focused on the governance aspect of what they thought they could improve with the city of Portland. And I think that a lot of people were ready for a change. I think some of us were a little shocked that it went from the most antiquated form of government to an experiment, really, that no one's ever really tried before. So we're, we're putting in a lot of new change. And I've always been comfortable with change. I've always been comfortable building things. And so I just want to extend my service to my hometown to help build this new system.
Two things you said just now. You said antiquated twice. So you're passionate about that. What's antiquated for you?
Well, what's been antiquated about the former government we've had for some time is that we didn't have the, we didn't have a traditional mayor executive branch with a legislative branch. We had really five mini mayors, one with more responsibility and a little bit more power. But for the most part, forever, we've had city commissioners oversee bureaus. So you have the executive role, then you have the legislative role and council meetings, and then you have the expectations to be out there with the community all over the city. And it's, I think, when Portland was working really well, it was fine for this to exist. But when we got into places of late, like the last 10 years, it's been more challenging for just five people to think that they're overseeing all the executive functions, and they're doing the legislative work, and they're out there in the community constantly trying to connect with the people. And so I do think that shifting to the regional form of government, where you can spend more time in the main streets across our city, especially in the regions that they represent, really getting to know the community. For me, it's special because I, you know, I'm 62, and I've spent over 60% of my life in District Two. When I've lived in Portland, Oregon, I've lived in District Two. I was born in this district. I graduated from high school at Roosevelt. My mom raised eight children, and she went back to school. When I was in middle school, I'm the youngest of eight, and she went to University of Portland, got her degree there. My dad had a business. He was a dentist in St. John's. So my roots just run so deep here. So it's exciting to think I'll be able to represent, hopefully, if the voters will have me, represent my hometown within the city that I love.
Well, see, now, you said that twice. And you answered the question I was going to ask. You said my hometown twice, and that counts. My hometown, my hometown. You gotta care for where you stay. It's clear that there's a strong push for change. However, with the major shift, there are concerns, especially for marginalized communities. Let's discuss some of those concerns. Firstly, geographic districts promised localized representation, but there's a risk that marginalized communities may not receive adequate attention. We've seen that before, and we've seen that over again. Dan, how can we ensure equitable representation for these communities?
I think the fact that there's going to be 12, three in each district. I think the fact that there's a small donor matching program, so you get nine to one gifts matched to your first 20, has really provided a lot of access. I know I never would have thought of running for office in my 20s or 30s, for example, because I just didn't have the social network and knew the people that could help you get into office. And this gives people at a much younger age an entry point into being a part of the political dialogue and, and, and have an opportunity to be elected, if you will. I also think that having the regional, the regional system will allow us to know more of the people in our region, in the communities. And so I actually think the access to dialogue, to building relationship within your district, that of course should include all communities, should go up in this form of government. We'll be spending more time outside of City Hall. If we're not spending more time out of City Hall, the whole thing was a failure, because this was supposed to give us a chance to really be in more retail-like politics and retail relationship, and then bring that to the dais, bring that to the dialogue of the council.
You mentioned that you wouldn't have run in your 20s or your 30s, and now you're 63?
I'm, no, not yet. 60, I'll be 62 in June.
Well, 63. You stop trying to hold on to it. It's, it's important that you bring that to the seasoning table. You know, for black people, we love good seasoning. Soul food, baby. You gotta put that seasoning in there. And, and as I look at the candidates that are there, it's something about what's in your seasoning that's going to really need to resonate. What do you really, what are the strongest values that you bring to the table? What do you bring as seasoning?
Well, I know where I'm from. And I think when you were a graduate of Roosevelt High School in the late 70s, you also experienced some of those marginalized communities. And you, you don't, I didn't really know it until I went to University of Oregon, and then I realized that I was behind my peers that went to schools like Lincoln, for example. They just had a different education experience than I did at Roosevelt High School. What I got, what I received, though, in my education that they did not, is Columbia Villa was part of the Roosevelt area. Roosevelt was selected as the refugee point of entry for the, they were called the boat people refugees from Laos and Vietnam. And Roosevelt was the targeted school for them. So I have experienced connecting with multicultural communities my entire life, because that's what you do when you were born and raised in North Portland. And so you never forget that. And you have a fighting spirit to always represent those that haven't, that have not been seen and not been lifted forever.
And coming from, from a different perspective than just Oregon being one of the racist states in the nation, understanding the transition there and acceptance and the melting pot, experiencing those things naturally is a good thing. A very major concern for me is a two-year transition timeline, which could disrupt essential services. How do we manage this change effectively that will prevent a disproportionate impact on the marginalized communities?
I, I think that it's what's most important is for all of us that are currently there, is that we act as if it's already 1125. And so the decisions that I've been making, the way that I'm acting right now as a commissioner, is already in that transition. I don't really use the rear view mirror much in my life. I'm always looking forward. And we just have to be ready. There's no, there's no way for us to have a two-year period to build it. It's about implementing those, those services instantly. Everyone in Portland that I talk to, no matter what their ideology is, isn't very happy right now. Especially those that are paying taxes. Because the fact is, that has gone up and services have gone down. So what I think I understand is the bread and butter, the nuts and bolts of what it means to be a local public servant. The sewer pipes, the 911 calls, they don't care what your ideology is. They just, people just want it to work. And so what I hope we don't experience with increasing to 12 is that we get into some polarized caucusing, because that's not what Portland needs right now. We need to have tough conversations, and we need to keep moving the work. And I guess because I'm on a dragon boat team right now, dragon boat races on June 7th, the Grand Floor Parade Day, is we gotta start rowing in the same direction. And we have to check our egos at the door and realize that what people really care about is their services improving.
You know, Charles Jordan really was a transitional player, especially where it came to the parks and recs issue. There's something that we're talking about now called the vibrant community space. Tell us about that from your, and you seem excited about that.
I am excited because I, I, I got my way. So I asked my colleagues that we had, we had parks was going to be with infrastructure like sewer and water, and they were going to put arts with business licenses. And then they, I don't know where we're going to put children and families, the children's levy.
Oh, don't say that too loud. You don't know where you're gonna put them?
No, when we were doing these discussions, they were, they were doing these, the people, the bureaucrats that were doing the org chart. And so I'm like, timeout. I think the reason people have chosen Portland as a home, have moved here, have stayed here, have had multi-generations of families remain here, of all, all cultures, all communities that have really been here for some time, is because what makes Portland Portland is the beauty. And so parks is a big deal. And also our access to arts, and parks is a part of the arts access, because it's the number one presenter of arts in our city. And so I wanted to make sure why we're dealing with some very difficult issues. Let's face it, the poisonous drugs on our street is something we've never seen before. And we have been slow to respond to that.
And it's a national problem.
It's a national problem. But you know what? We're a little bit of the epicenter, because we have allowed, we've tolerated behaviors that a lot of cities won't tolerate. And so we've, the word gets out. I'm from a family of people who are either in recovery or they're dead. And so when you're in recovery, you know, you need a little tough love to turn it around and make sure that you can be accountable to have the miracles that will then come to you once you live one day at a time.
Tell me about that a little bit, where it comes to your family. Because until you've had that experience and understand the dynamics of that, like so many African American families have had to deal with that drug scene, and because it was so, you know. So tell me about that. How has it affected you in coming from that family that you've described? How, how does that really jive with what you're gonna do?
It's what motivated me to run for office. When my brother died on the streets in 2014, and when it was really clear that my brother chose the life on the streets of the hard drug medication with a mental health bipolar diagnosis, and he stopped doing the right type of therapy, if you will, and then started doing the wrong type of hard drugs that led to a heroin addiction, that mattered more to him on a daily basis than anything else, because your head and your heart aren't connected anymore. I like to distinguish between the word houselessness and homelessness. My mother, bless her heart, rest in peace, she was in her late 60s, living in San Diego. And I was down visiting her, and I could tell financially, things weren't as good as she was making it out to be. And I just got a little nosy with her and looked at her books and realized she was spending over 50% on her rent. And I'm like, Mom, this isn't sustainable. And she belonged to a church community. And so we had a good conversation about the fact that they had a board where, you know, roommates wanted. And so she advertised, saying, you know, she's lived with a widow who had a beautiful home, and she's spent one third the amount of money she was spending on her apartment. So this person who was on the verge of could have been houseless, because her pride was so thick, that now she was going to live in a wonderful home. And that was exactly what she needed. And there are people like that, and their, their house, they are on the verge of being houseless. My brother on the streets, addicted to heroin daily, you couldn't reach him. We couldn't house him. He needed to get sober. And that was the biggest thing. And the only time he was close to getting sober was when he would do something so bad, he'd be, he'd be in jail and he'd dry out. And at that time, we'd try to find him an entry point into treatment. And there just wasn't much available in the state of Oregon.
And there's, and there's still an issue with that, which takes us into our next segment.
So that's someone who's homeless, is what I'm trying to say. That's the difference. So his head and his heart weren't connected. So that's homelessness to me.
And, and, and I agree. Funding is always critical, and it's an issue right now that we've got to delve into. The significant cost of this transition might divert resources from critical issues like houselessness, homelessness, and social services that go along with it. How do we balance the budget to ensure those vital services that you just talked about? And, and how do we cement, oh, we're talking about cement now, in place that it's going to really take effect and do some difference here? How are we gonna do that?
You know, I just brought something to the diocese last week when we were doing the budget and amendment that said, we need full accountability of what we're spending on homelessness. We, it's impacting our city's budget all over the place. I'll never forget this. When I was first on boarded in 2020, in September 2020, I was meeting with the infrastructure bureau leaders. And at the end of the meeting, all, everything was on Zoom then, and people were just reading scripts. It was kind of a boring meeting, to be honest with you. And then towards the end of the meeting, I asked, I asked, I have a, I have a question. Is homelessness impacting your bureau? And they all became animated, their hands went up, and they all wanted to tell me something. And they all told me, yes, deeply, and how much time it's taking, how much expense it is taking, how hard it is on the staff and the parks when they're constantly having to help people move from one place to another. We want our parks to be safe for the, the parents, the families that are coming into our parks. Water Bureau, when they'd go check some of their infrastructure, there would be issues there, and they'd have to get security to help them when they would go to their sites. My point is, we weren't accounting for all of the extra expense this was causing. So I asked for us to start doing that accounting, so we'd have more true cost associated with this humanitarian crisis that's on our streets. And I think that that will help, and we need to just be more honest about the expense and the tolls taken. Because you're right, until we take care of this, just like any individual, Portland needs to get into recovery. It's basically like that. We are in a place where we have to surrender a bit and admit this is an issue that's been kicking our butt for a long time. And we have to bring truth to that power. And we have to just know that that takes a little bit of tough love in order for that to improve. And I think as a city, we have to get more honest about that.
Somebody told me you had the magic bullet. Somebody told me that. They said, Dan Ryan has the magic bullet. Is that the truth?
Well, I'll take that compliment, although I don't believe in magic bullets. I think that we have is a very complex local problem, and it takes a complex local solution. And in the political arena, which can be quite petty and polarizing, sometimes has trouble sorting through the complexity of issues. And again, we, we try to put them into some polarized political space, when it's really just about some facts that we have to deal with. And as grownups, we have to take care of it. And I think that what people might have appreciated, even though, boy, did I get my, you know, what kicked while we were trying to do it, is that we were thinking we could just take people like my brother, who was on the streets doing drugs daily, and put him into a single occupancy unit. And that's, that's the worst thing you can do for an addict that's not treated, is put them into an isolated room. And sure enough, it never worked every time we got into one of those. So we had to get, we have to get honest about that. The village is with services that are a transition point, an on-ramp, so people can get services, can be seen again, can have someone get them back into registered in life. I mean, there were people that we've been dealing with that social security numbers weren't known, they weren't connected to, of course, Medicaid or Medicare. And so just getting them hooked in to society's services again, having a social worker see them and work with them. So when you have an assessment period for three to nine months, then you're going to have more success placing someone into housing. This whole notion that we're going to take people from the streets, living in squalor, and then put them into an apartment, everything's just going to be fine, wasn't working. So I had the, I had the audacity to say that to county government in 2020. It didn't make me very popular internally. And then I also had the audacity to say, we need to build these villages all over town. And those were some colorful Zoom meetings. We're not going to neighborhoods, talking about what this would, why this was going to be okay. And sure enough, they, seven got built as opposed to six. They're getting better results than anything else we've done in terms of solutions to getting people whole again. We're getting over 50% of those in the villages with services into housing, as opposed to the 5% or 10% in traditional shelters. And so it's on the right path. It's not, it's not the silver bullet. It was just looking at the system and what is missing. The magic bullet, yeah. Okay, the magic bullet. So I think if there's a magic bullet, it's about helping people go from isolation to connection.
I'm talking to Commissioner Dan Ryan, and we're talking about the transitional government that's taking, the transitioning government that's taking place is in, in, in our city. And he's running for city commissioner this next term. He's done a pretty good job, but we're going to hold him to the fire. We're talking about ranked choice voting, and this may pose challenges for communities with limited access to education and information. How do we ensure comprehensive understanding and active participation in this new voting system?
I'm smiling because I have met people with PhDs. I met attorneys that don't understand what they're voting on. I would say that education is everywhere on this one. In fact, we just had the primary, right, last, this week, this week. And I had so many people calling me the last two weeks, like, why aren't you on this ballot? What's going on? Like, well, we're doing all ranked choice voting in November. What's ranked choice voting? Well, you voted yes on this, right? Well, yeah, but I was mad. I just want to change. So yes, I voted yes. Well, now you're going to rank the people in your district, at least the top three, because you're going to have three people representing you. So this education campaign is going to go on everywhere. The city is allocating funds, especially for those that speak a different language, for marginalized communities. We are doing some extra targeted outreach to those communities. But I'll tell you, E D, I would say your average voter right now is confused.
Yeah, you know what?
And that's okay. It's change.
Well, you know, something we can't be confused about, and, and marginalized people in general, are our children. Our babies get, get lost in the, in the mix. The children's levy is important to you. Tell me about that.
Yeah, I was happy that that's the one assignment the mayor gave me when I first got elected that I've kept. For me, it's always about the kids. And the best way to actually build, to really do equity work, is to focus on the children from birth to career. And if we continue to look at those communities, we failed forever, and we get the right resources to those communities, and we have more and more people that are economically mobile by age 24, then you're doing the right work. That's what it's always about for me, is eliminating those disparities and seeing acceleration of not just academic scores, but in youth employment. And so it's really about that access. I really worked hard in my career to, to get the trades back on, in the educators' dialogue with students. Because we were too often like college, military, or Walmart. It's like, no, there's this other choice called the trades. So I think what's most important for all communities that have been marginalized is to build economic mobility.
Amen. And don't forget the kiddies.
It's about generational, building generational wealth.
Building, let's move on. He said, building generational wealth. Can you imagine that's a thing in African American community? Lastly, while the shift towards inclusivity, I have a problem with that word. Every week, and I use it all the time. It's prophecy. It may not eliminate established power structures. Now, how do we ensure the new city council is responsible to the needs of the marginalized and deal with their children in those communities?
Well, I think the focus always has to be, you, you know, if your city is a city that cares, is a city that's on the right track on how you're doing with your children. One of my biggest concerns right now is the declining enrollment we've been seeing in our schools. And when you see declining enrollment, you see less money coming to those school districts. And that usually is always, should always be a concern. And so I, one reason I wanted to build the vibrant community space is because parks and arts and children's services is what families want. And when people say they moved to Portland, maybe they came here on a sunny day and they saw the mountain, and they're all excited, and they moved here. But mostly, they do their research. And when they see that, that some of the services in the schools are going down, and you can get a better deal in Madison, Wisconsin, then why would you relocate to Portland, Oregon? So we have to make Portland attractive to families again, to all families. Because if we don't have those resources, and this is for marginalized communities as well, because if we lose our tax base, like we're starting to lose, like when you start to see population decline, you start to see businesses closing down, and less business revenue coming in from small businesses, you're going to see less coffers, less money coming into the coffers of government. And that's never good for marginalized communities.
Ain't that a shame? Listen.
I want everyone running to at least do one class in economics, like Economics 101.
Economics 101. And I'm going to be the teacher. Thank you, Dan.
Because money just doesn't grow on trees, as we know.
Thank you, Dan, for sharing your insights. Before we wrap up, I wanted, I want to do something. I want to discuss the opportunities this transition offers for not just the marginalized people, but for the entire community. And how do we see that involve the geographic districts offering this unique opportunity for dedicated and localized representation? How can we harness this energy to ensure tailored policies and solutions for marginalized communities within the spectrum of the broader community? How can we incorporate those things that bring about what we need?
Well, first, because I won't be in City Hall as a city commissioner overseeing bureaus, I won't have to be in as many meetings in the city with the bureaucrats, questioning why they're making certain decisions and trying to encourage them to maybe rethink something. I'll miss that a little bit. It's fun to be in there. It's be, you know, in their face a bit to like rethink stuff. But as a legislator.
I'm hoping so.
Yeah. And as a legislator, I'll be out in the community. And more importantly, we voted on something that has a promise, and it's going to be hard to deliver. And we need to, you need to hold the electeds accountable to it. So in North and Northeast, there's going to be three people representing this community. Those three people are going to be three distinct individuals that have had different life experiences. They're probably going to be different ages, different races. And they have to learn how to first and foremost work together. It, it doesn't matter what their ideology is. As public servants, your job is to serve everybody. And so the three of us will need to figure out how we are going to vibe as a unit. And we will work effectively when we work together. Like, we have to figure out how to row in the same direction. And that means you're not going to get everything you want. But you have to find out where the three of you can align up to go deep on something and have impact, and then work with the community to bring it along.
You know, I'm so glad that you decided to stay where you are and not move to the place of running for mayor. Because as I said, we're going to need that seasoning, I think. I believed in you the first time. And I'm going to believe in you now. The extensive community engagement that led to these changes, it signifies a willingness to listen to the voices of the marginalized, listening to the sounds of the sidewalks. How can we continue this engagement to ensure that their voices are heard in the decision-making process? That's where it really counts. That's where the rubber meets the road.
And if we're out of our offices downtown and in the community, having this type of dialogue, then we're on the right path.
Yeah. Yeah. Advocates for the change have emphasized inclusivity. And how can marginalized communities hold leaders accountable? What should we be doing to hold people's feet to the fire for delivering on what they say, I solemnly swear?
I think there's a lot to that question. I'm bringing, I'm bringing something to the council about accountability with our granting process. So the city is like a big foundation that doesn't have granting guidelines. It's, it's, there's a lot of personality-based money that flows through. And we need principle-based.
He said it. You said it. I don't believe you. You're going to get in a lot of trouble.
No, that's called, if you look at my career, of course, I would say that. I get into good trouble. You can appreciate that's probably how we found each other. I get into good trouble and you can appreciate that's probably how we found each other. And so my point of view is that you must come with a plan. You must have some accountability with some metrics on how you're going to do what success looks like.
Yes.
You should always break things down by race.
Yes.
So we don't leave it to chance and we see over one year's time, did you deliver on that promise?
Yes.
And I do think that over a three year period of time, you need to see a trend going in a direction as you advertised. And I think that when I was running a nonprofit, most of the money that we got was always from private sector. And private sector would hold you accountable. The, the foundations, the corporations, you had to spell out what your vision was, what your plan was. And then you had to give updates every year. I've been surprised since I've been at the city that we sent out some largest funds out into the community with not a lot of accountability. And I think it's so important for the children that we were talking about earlier, that we make sure that we have that type of transparency and accountability for results for those children.
Yes. The shift towards a more polished and more deliberate policy focused city council could lead to a stronger emphasis on addressing systemic issues. What are some key policy areas we should focus on? What should we be saying, look, do this?
We need to have the best first responder system in the country.
Okay.
Just last week, I, I had a good, I got in some good trouble. I was trying to elevate the park rangers into the first responder system. And I'll tell you why. We have Portland Street Response, which I'm a supporter of. And they're unarmed and they show up in certain circumstances. And then we have police, we have fire, we have nine one one. And then we also have the rangers in the parks. The rangers are the first responders to so many people having a bad day. People who are homeless, people are just in the wrong place at the right time. They connect with them, they're relational. And then if it gets into a situation where they need support and help, they, they communicate with other units in the first response system. Oftentimes it's, it's fire because it's a medical situation. It's about collaboration. I think that what we were in a debate too often in 20 and 21 was like, police are bad, Portland Street Response, good. They all need to be good and they also all need to work with one another and they have to collaborate with one another. Sometimes you need to send unarmed response. Many times you do not. But the unarmed response has to communicate with the system so it's efficient and it delivers results.
You know, broader conditions, including.
So that's one.
That's one.
Yeah, that's, that's one. We have to keep improving our first responder system. And we've been too slow, like our nine one one wait times have been too long. And clearly people want a better response. Then we have to increase the number of housing units that are affordable for Portlanders.
You really set me to thinking, but we, we've got to wrap up. We've only got a couple of more minutes left. Broader conditions, including the Black Lives Matter protesting concerns about equity. It suggested a willingness to address issues faced by marginalized communities. We've seen that kind of take a rollback over the past few years. That's what brought me into the forefront, into the community. How do we continue to leverage the support to drive positive change rather than to just let it all die? Or was it worth anything? Was it worth anything?
Well, ideology speeches do not get you results.
Yeah.
What you need is an action plan and you need to spell out what you're going to do with those resources to improve the conditions for those you are serving. That's why I want to make sure that the money that goes out in the community has that type of accountability so that we see what those results are. I don't think anyone's going to back away from the fact that we need better results for those communities we've been failing forever.
You know, I'd like to see you do something and, and, and I, I'd like to see you put a commission together to say, what did we learn from Black Lives Matter? And how does this really affect where we're going? That would be a big thing.
Yeah. I think we want to see what the long-term, like what are we building for the long-term?
Yeah.
When we're talking about real success, it's having people again, be ready to be economically mobile when they're 24, when they're an adult. We should also provide services for people up until they're at least 24. Cause you know, when a family has resources, they take care of that child till they're at least 24 or 25. So in government, we have to find out how we can be a partnership with those types of young adults. Not think there's some 18 year old cutoff. So that's something I've always been big on. I want to see the children's levy being spent, spend more money on people in their teen and young adult years.
We don't want Jean Jean the dancing machine to come out, so we better stop this right now. We appreciate it.
I haven't heard that in a long time. Was that from the Gong Show?
That's from the Gong Show.
The fact that I can remember that.
And then they had Saturday Night at the Apollo that did some similar thing. Thanks, Dan, for being, for gracing us with your presence and for your serving as a sitting commissioner. You've done a, a good job. You have certainly made a difference in the community during your time with us thus far. And our hope is that you be allowed to continue to make the kind of differences that we've seen you make before. This has been an enlightening discussion. The shift in Portland city government structure is monumental, transforming the wire works. Oh, you take some electrician and it has the potential to address longstanding issues and enhance representation. As Portland navigates this transition, we must pay close attention to its developments to ensure smooth transmission, a transition and a brighter future, especially for marginalized communities. Dan, we really appreciate you being with us. And until next time, we want you to stay informed, stay engaged and let's work together for a better Portland. And the beat still goes on. Thank you again for listening to us today and joining us on Mondays with Mondene. But it's up to us to keep the rhythm of democracy alive and we need to make it kick. Let's do this together. Stay groovy, stay woke and keep spreading that love by insisting on a more just and inclusive future. A special shout out to our sponsors today. Postshines, not just a restaurant, but an institution located at 8139 North Denver, right here in the heart of Kenton. And you can expect the best soul food this side of the wood laminate. Oh my God. Aunties and aunties daycare services, they take real good care of your children, just like you at home. And Adorn Electric, huh? They really light up our lives. I'm grateful for their support on this podcast and you can visit me right here. Well, I guess it's sort of in the same vicinity, just a few feet away. Celebration Tabernacle right next door, 8131 North Denver. And a special thank you to our production team, Dion, Robin, Andy and Paul. Not one of them is bigger than the other and they all stand tall. If you enjoyed this episode, please share it with your friends and follow us. Turn on those notifications so you never miss a thing from Mondays with Mondene. And be sure to follow us on Facebook over here and then YouTube, you see it right there. And thank you for tuning in today. And remember it's not just the music, it's the message. Keep the conversation going and make a difference one beat at a time. And until next time, stay woke. You know, I talk about a lot about knowing where you came from, to know where you're going. Well, I came from the projects of St. Louis, Missouri. And I ended up into the majestic mountaintops of Portland, Oregon. It's been a wonderful journey and Lewis and Clark took that journey from St. Louis to Portland and I took it too. It talks about who I am and as I'm with you often in the, in cyberspace or on websites or on the, you know, what do you call it? Social media. I want you to know a little bit about me and who I am. This book talks about my fantasies, my failures, my triumphs. And more than that, it talks about the resiliency of being able to continue to go forward regardless of the odds. I'd get a copy. It's called From Maladies to Melodies. And I hope that you enjoy it and give me some feedback. God bless.
Hey, it's time for you to come to Postshines.
Check out that catfish sandwich.
Oh my goodness, is that the shrimp? Oh boy.
Man, look at that chocolate chip cake.
Man, I need to get over to Postshines at 8139 North Denver.
Right now.
Because this food looks delicious.
Or call if you'd like. And don't miss it.
You'll be sorry.
In times gone past, we find ourselves making excuses. Let me bury my debt. Ooh. I've got to get home and turn to the brand new myself. I need some time alone. Can't just wait until I finish texting on my phone.